All right, good evening, everybody, all of our guests tonight. This is the September 18th, 2023 Lakeville Select Board Meeting. Is there anybody here that is recording the meeting besides LakeCam itself? No? Okay, then we'll carry on. All members are present this evening, including Administrator Sky. We have a number of guests this evening that will come up with us as we go through the agenda. So we will start with number one, Select Board announcements. There will be a recycling energy drive on Sunday, September 24th, 2023, at the Ponetwick Regional High School from 10:00 to 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This is open to free town Lakeville and Rochester residents only. There is a fee of $20 per vehicle, plus individual fees for electronic and other items. Please visit the town's website under News or flyer for the event with a list of the fees. If you don't already have a transfer station ticket, sticker for Lakeville is a really good opportunity to get some items out of your house for small cost. One reminder, mark the calendars for the annual Lakeville Arts and Music Festival, which will take place on September 30th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Lakeville Townhouse Grounds in Dickran Duran Square. Additional information of the festival, you can visit the Lakeville Arts Council Facebook page. And still, if you'd ever wanted to volunteer or a commissioner committee, the town has vacancies on Conservation Committee, Cable Advisory Committee, Capital Expenditure Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, Energy Advisory Committee, and Open Space Committee. To apply for any of these, please visit the town's website. On the Town Clerk's page, you will find a volunteer form there. Any other announcements before we move on to item two? All right, Mr. Sky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Melissa Turkott of the Park Commission informed me today that the Gamash Playground will be open to the public this week. Installation of the guardrail along the town unproperty and Kenfath Drive is complete. Construction of the outdoor stage pavilion behind Old Town Hall is scheduled to begin in early October. The Hassawampsett Elementary School project continues on schedule. As of last Friday, all but 34 windows have been replaced. Emphasis through October's substantial completion date will shift to the doors. Work will continue at night and on weekends. The invitation for bid for the Newfields Parking Lot project was issued last week. Proposals are due on October 2nd. The town has applied for a grant to install handicapped access to the old library building through the Mass Office of Disabilities Annual ADA Grant. As you recall, the bids came in high and the board directed us to apply for a grant. We are also working on a community compact grant application for records management at the animal shelter. In addition to the outdoor stage cover, the Gamash Playground and the Newfields Parking Lot, as well as the ambulance replacement project being funded tonight, several ARPA-funded projects are underway and are nearing completion. The town facilities water project will improve water delivery at Ted Williams Camp, provide water, septic, and restroom facilities at the Old Town Hall, and provide water to John Pond Park. The Ted Williams and Old Town Hall portions are being prepared for bid. John Pond Park requires development of an agreement between the town, the City of Ton, and Blueberry Estates is currently being developed. Combined with the park redesign proposed for funding through the CPA, this project will provide for upgraded facilities and amenities at John Pond Park. The next regular meeting of the Select Board will be at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 10th, here at the police station. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Ari on those announcements? All right, be excited to get the playground back open. That is looking amazing with all the grass growing there. All right, so moving on to number three, very exciting. Going to meet with Plymouth County Treasurer for a presentation of an ARPA payment, and I'll leave it at that, and perhaps let Chief O'Brien and our representatives walk us through tonight's presentation.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the board for having me here tonight to celebrate this opportunity, this funding opportunity that's been provided to us. But before I do that, I'd like to apologize to two members in this room tonight. When we received word that the Plymouth County Commissioners were going to be taking on the burden of handling our COVID-related funding, ARPA funding, I was admittedly skeptical of that plan and I didn't think it was a great idea, and they've proven me wrong. We're the envy of the other counties, our program, the way the funds have come in, the resources that have been provided us. I deal with a lot of chiefs from other counties and they wish they had a similar setup. So my apologies, apologies to you. So this award was born from need. We operate in a very dynamic landscape right now where we're shuffling patients to distant hospitals to deal with capacity issues. We're dealing with increased call volume, and we're dealing with accidents almost on a daily basis. We have a ton of demand for our services. 14 months ago, we put our newest ambulance in service. That ambulance has just under 50,000 miles on it already, so that is an indication. When I took over, we averaged about 25,000 miles on our ambulance annually. So our CIP is set up for around 30,000 miles per year. So to deal with this and then combine also with our inability to get an ambulance in a timely fashion, it's a 24-month turnaround in an ambulance right now. What the counties given us through this ARPA program is flexibility to deal with this sudden need for an ambulance and ability to get around the lack of flexibility or the delay and be able to react to this new situation. So what they've done for us is given us the opportunity to basically keep on answering those calls for help and have an ambulance in town that's going to last us for years to come. So if I could call forward the Chair of the Plymouth County Commissioners, Valenzola, and our Treasurer, County Commissioner, uh, excuse me, Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, for the check presentation.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Tom, thank you very much.
Big one tonight.
If you guys want to say anything or...
Sure.
Would you mind putting that up on the poll?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Chair. Thank you, Treasurer. It's nice to be back here in Lakeville. Pleasure to see you. I love taking the trip down 18, especially on this beautiful blustery day. But certainly a pleasure to be back here and we're really grateful. We're grateful for the chief's support, for Ari's support, and for you three, especially Selectman Fabian coming to our meetings, Advisory Board meetings, which for folks who aren't aware, that's our legislative branch. That's where our budget gets decided after the commission has put it forward. So we're certainly grateful for the added work that she does there as well. As the chief noted, three years ago now, three and a half years ago, Plymouth County was given an allocation of CARES Act money. And I won't go too far into the history of that. I believe at your last meeting that we were here, Treasurer O'Brien and I, gave a little bit of that history, but the long and short of it was Plymouth County, much to the chagrin of both the state and a handful of our communities, executed that $90 million grant program. The end result was 50% more dollars to Lakeville than like-sized communities outside of Plymouth County. So a similar-sized community to Lakeville got less, 50% less than Lakeville did. We delivered it quicker and we did it cheap. We did it for less than 1%, and a lot of that credit goes to Treasurer O'Brien and his staff. When ARPA was allocated, the chief was correct with CARES. We were the only county in Massachusetts that did CARES. When ARPA was passed, every existing county in Massachusetts that was given an allocation decided to do ARPA because they saw how successful our CARES Act program was. And we're very proud of that program. We're very proud of the collaboration we've had with Chief O'Brien, with Mr. Sky, and with your entire financial staff here in Lakeville to be able to continue to provide those funds. We're currently on track, and the treasurer will correct me if I'm wrong, to expend approximately 3% on administrative administration of this program. And he's nodding, so I got that number correct off the top of my head, which is good. Just for perspective, the national average is 7% to 10%. And we're able to do that because, again, the other counties are doing ARPA, so we're able to share the cost of the administration of the program, the compliance of the program, so that when we give you both the fake check right there and the real check that we've already given to Mr. Sky, when that money's in your account, you don't have to worry that we're going to come back and say, oops, we made a mistake, or maybe you made a mistake, or we both made a mistake, and we have to take that money back. And that happened, that happened under the CARES Act. It's happening under ARPA and it's happening all over the Commonwealth. It did not happen in Plymouth County under CARES. It's not going to happen in Plymouth County under ARPA. And a lot of that work is due to the robust and rigorous system we put in place to ensure compliance with federal regulations. On behalf of Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Hanley, we're extremely proud of our collaboration with you folks and we're pleased to be able to serve alongside you and provide these services for our shared constituencies. We're very grateful to Representative Oral and Senator Roderick for their support of this program as well. We could not do this without them and they are staunch advocates for Lakeville for these funds. So again, we're grateful to be here. And as it usually goes, things that I miss, Treasurer O'Brien will fill in.
Excellent job, Chair. We're actually hoping to do it for less than 3%. We're on track for a little less, but we'd like to have that benchmark and try and beat that, which will be significantly better than the national average. We just couldn't be more thrilled to be here this evening to present, we call it a presentation check
Yes.
and the real check to the town of Lakeville for a much-needed ambulance. It's not lost on me that as we were sitting here, a call came in. So it's obviously a very real need. We appreciate the advocacy of Chief O'Brien and his entire department. We know a few of his team members were here tonight as well to offer our thanks and appreciation to us and to you for recognizing this need and for supporting the application that was put in. I want to echo the sentiments. We appreciate our federal delegation. This doesn't happen without them voting the ARPA money. And I don't know if you followed in the media, there was some early on conversation about clawing that money back. But had that happened, we wouldn't be here giving you $572,403.49. So we're very glad that didn't happen. And our legislative delegation said, no, we want that money to come in. I was very glad that the Chair recognized Senator Roderick and Representative Oral. They are great partners. As we went through the early challenges, they were supportive. They said, we know Plymouth County can do this because we've been there for 20 years and we've seen what they can do. We're thrilled they're taking this money and we know it will get back to our communities in ways they need it. And you know this already, but you have a great team here in Lakeville. Ari Sky calls me pretty regularly. I wasn't sure I should give him my cellphone, but he's good. He only calls me twice on weekends, so that's helpful. But he has been a very good user of the first CARES program, the ARPA program. His applications are very thorough and complete, and he has great partnership with the departments and knows how that works. And then the relationship we have with Chief O'Brien is just invaluable. He's been very good about talking not just about the needs here in Lakeville, but the needs around Plymouth County. They have a very august body, the Plymouth County Chiefs Association, that keeps us informed of their needs. We faced a worldwide pandemic and we're still dealing with those challenges. This money is to help our communities face those challenges. You folks have done a fantastic job. Your team has done a fantastic job accessing those resources. So we're thrilled again to present you with this check. I will be handing the check over during the picture presentation so that we actually can see the check go into the town of Lakeville. And really excited about the program and what we've been able to do. I will say too, and we said this before, we'll be back. This isn't the only time, there are other applications in the queue. We've already delivered some money, we'll deliver more. But we're very grateful for the partnership that we have here in the town of Lakeville. So thank you very much for having us. And we're hoping that we might be able to do a quick picture in front of the bigger check with the board. We were hoping some members of the fire department, but they went out on a call. Fortunately, we have the chief and just take a quick picture before you get on with the rest of your business. But I don't know if there's any questions you want to ask us while you have the Commissioner and the Treasurer here.
Yeah, any comments you'd like to make?
This is something else, this is great.
It's a big deal.
Exactly, I mean, you look at the numbers on that, but what it actually equates to, you know, in a physical sense, so this is wonderful.
The total number, sorry for interrupting, that's not only in an ambulance, but that's every major piece of equipment on the ambulance. So we have an ambulance that shows up, ready to go out on their first call without any direct burdens to our residents. So that's huge.
Yeah?
Yeah, I just want to thank, you know, the county. I actually enjoy coming to the county because we do the budget stuff, we do everything, but it's also a source of information. It's a really good way for us to find out what other communities are doing. It's nice to meet with other Select Board members from around our county. So we got a great demonstration on some of the fire prevention opportunities that the county has. There's always something, you know, new to learn from that. And, you know, I do, I like coming to the county. So, you know, I like seeing you guys and, you know, I know I asked you for the keys a few months ago and you said, just wait. And I said, okay, I'll be patient. So this is nice to see that it's really here now, it came to be. So thank you.
Yeah, of course.
And I think also, this doesn't just help our, you know, town. We have so many mutual aid calls and such going that this will serve so many other communities as well. I mean, this number alone would represent, on a normal CIP, 25% or more? I mean, it's a huge, huge number for our town. So this not only satisfies a need, but also then unlocks us to be able to redistribute some other funds as necessary on things that we wouldn't have had the opportunity to do. So I really do thank all of you and when can we get them back?
I did just want to add, as many communities, I was glad the chief mentioned this, they submit for the ambulance or other programs, but your team here, the chief and Ari and others, said, no, we need to put stuff on the ambulance. We need the whole package. So your check is a little bit bigger than we deliver to most because they realize they should get the supplemental items as well. So kudos to the team for thinking of those things.
Yeah, and I know I'll leave somebody out, but I do notice we've got Town Accountant Hassett in the back and former Select Board member LeCameron, who've also been heavily involved in this over the last few years. So really, like you said, this is three and a half or so years back. I mean, it's been a lot of work and we started small and we're getting bigger and bigger.
Yeah.
Hopefully they keep growing.
Good way to start off a meeting, right?
Yes, very agreed. Yep.
So could we do a quick photo with that?
Sure, any other comments beforehand or?
Okay.
All right, okay, let's do it.
Where's the best place to do it?
That's a great question.
Me over here?
I think you're... Can you grab the check here? I think you can give me the look. Things intense, it's not a solid check.
Oh, okay. Want to get in the middle?
Ari, you can get in here too.
That's my belly, I like this. Hold on, we need Ari here.
Straight as it's gonna go.
Yeah, I'm trying not to be. All right.
Everybody look right first, I guess?
Okay, we'll do right. That's this way, right?
I think so. Good? We're gonna make your way in. All right, Chief Perkins on the left.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, sir.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
And just while I have witnesses.
He likes to do this.
Yeah.
All right, everybody watching, I'm handing this check. No wonder the possession put it down.
We'll take a picture and deposit that right now.
Hopefully, hopefully, we'll get the water locked out there.
Yeah.
That was great.
All right, next. All right. Okay. All right, so we are just past 6:15, which we have a hearing, but could we quickly, were there any questions on the meeting minutes and item number four?
Well, yeah, why don't we come back to that? I just had a couple of things.
You want to come back to it?
Yes, yes, please.
All right, so we will come to agenda item number five. Public hearing for the transfer of the common victual all alcoholic beverages license for the Back Nine Club, 17 Heritage Hill Drive. All right, just give me a minute. All right, so the first thing we're going to do is read the notice that was in the paper. All right, Town of Lakeville Select Board, pursuant to Chapter 138 of the General Laws, the Lakeville Select Board, acting as the licensing board, will conduct a public hearing at 6:15 PM on Monday, September 18th, 2023, on the application of B9 Club Inc. for a transfer of the common victual all alcoholic beverages license for the property located at 17 Heritage Hill Drive, Lakeville, Massachusetts. Said hearing will be held in the Rita Agarbit Community Meeting Room at the Lakeville Police Station located at 323 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. All right. Okay, undertake a motion to open the hearing for the license transfer?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, will anybody testify in this evening on behalf of Back Nine? All right, sir, would you mind coming to a mic, just introducing yourself first?
All right, good evening, Chair and Board. My name is Craig Medures and I'm the attorney for the B9 Club and Robert Pelucci.
Welcome to the evening, sir. Just formalities, everything you say tonight is considered testimony? You swear to tell the truth and everything that comes with it?
I do.
Thank you, sir. All right, so all comments supposed to be recognized through the chair. We'll give you an opportunity to speak to the transfer. Anything you'd like to share with us this evening? And before we get there, I just want to ask, Tracy, you've got all your paperwork and things you expect? I see green tags there.
Thank you.
All right, sir, feel free to speak to the application as you'd like.
All right, just as a means of introduction, I also do have Karen Donahue here with me tonight, who's the manager of the Back Nine Club currently. She's, as well as our proposed manager going forward. So if the board does have any questions, feel free to call her up and she can answer anything you may have.
Much appreciated.
This is a pretty simple application. There's no amendment requested as part of this license. The name, premises, and operation known as the Back Nine Club is going to stay the same as part of this application. It's a simple license transfer. As part of the transfer, we have submitted...
The microphones in this room unfortunately don't go into a PA, so they're just used for recording the streaming.
And speak louder than...
Yeah.
Sure. So, like I said, the intent is to keep it as a golf course. Nothing is going to change, it is the same premises. We have the same manager on record, staying on record. Hopefully, the intent is to improve some operations of the golf course, increase the rounds, increase the volume of business at the restaurant, which would be good both for the applicant as well as for potential jobs as well as the service community as a golf course. If the board does have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them regarding any specifics of the transaction.
I think one question you had for one of these previous was hours of operation remaining the same?
Correct, the hours of operation would remain exactly the same as indicated in the current license.
Okay. Members have any other questions for the gentleman?
Just for clarification, so this is staying in the same sort of situation as it is right now, right? It's... So the sale, the license is just going with the purchase of the business and the...
The real estate as well.
The real estate. But the actual golf course itself is being purchased by...
A different entity, which is common. I believe every golf course in Lakeville has a holding company which holds the real estate and has a separate entity which operates the business.
For the business.
You know, LaBarra and Hassawampsett Golf Company owns the real estate. LaBarra and operating copy operates the business. Symphony at Pecoy, there's a realty trust that owns the real estate in a incorporated entity which runs the business, which is mainly done for a liability, from a liability perspective, to keep them separate. But yes, and there is a lease between the two entities for the operation of the course, which is required by ADCC regulations.
Okay.
A copy of that lease has been included with the application.
Okay, but that's the way it was set up before too, right?
Correct, but it is the same common owner between the two.
Yeah, okay.
So in this case, the B9 Club Inc. continues to operate the restaurant itself? And then was it Lakeville Nursery is the real estate?
Would own the real estate. Technically, the B9 Club would operate the restaurant as well as the golf course.
The course itself.
Do all operations of the course and then the real estate itself is held by Lakeville Nursery Redevelopment LLC.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Sounds like everything is staying the same? All right. Sorry, there's like 30 pages of applications here, so...
It's mainly my fault.
No, no, it's good. It's all... As long as Tracy's not chasing you for something else, it's perfectly fine. All right. Okay, is there anybody else this evening that would like to provide testimony as far as this license transfer goes? Mr. LeCameron, mind coming forward? Please, sir. Swear to tell the truth, Mr. LeCameron?
Rich LeCameron, 32 Old Potter House Road in Lakeville. I get a question on the real estate transaction itself. I see that the sale of the real estate is $1.4 million and the business part is $450,000. And that real estate part is not being set up as a separate corporation. It's being transferred to the Lakeville Nursery Development Corporation?
Sure, you can stay with us.
Okay, I thank you. So it is being...
Was there a question? Did you get the question out though? Give him an opportunity to finish and then we'll...
So the other question having to do with that particular transaction is that the... That company is a development company, right? It's not a new company being formed, it's an existing company that's being transferred to. A development company. Right?
Okay, should I answer now? So the buyer of the real estate is Lakeville Nursery Redevelopment LLC. It does have one piece of real estate in it right now, which that piece of real estate is for sale. So once that sale goes through, the only parcel of real estate owned by that LLC will be the golf course at that point in time. Part of the reason for doing that is, it's a tax reason. The buyer wanted to do a 1031 exchange. So to buy a new property with the money from the other property, you have to keep it in the same entity. So it's more of a tax planning reason to keep it in the entity's name. It's the intent that no further properties besides this golf course be added to this LLC.
Additional question, the Lakeville Nursery Development Corporation is going to lease the property back to who?
The B9 Club Incorporated.
The B9 Club, so the... That part of the Lakeville Development Corporation owns all the buildings and all the land?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So it's not, even though there was a separate transaction for buying the business?
Correct, all the equipment at the site, both for the operation of the golf course as well as the kitchen, will be owned by the B9 Club Inc. And then all of the real estate and fixtures at the site will be owned by Lakeville Nursery Redevelopment LLC.
Okay, so who's going to be responsible for taking care of the golf course?
That would be the B9 Club Inc. because that is the operating entity which will control the operations of the golf course.
Even though the Lakeville Development owns the property?
Correct, and that is the same setup that's at the course right now. So Old Stone Lookout LLC currently owns the real estate at the Back Nine Club. And it's operated by the Back Nine Club Incorporated. It's set up the same, in the same way, so that the operations, including the equipment and personal property, is owned by the operating company. And then the real estate is owned by the limited liability company which owns the real estate.
I'm disappointed that the new owner is not here at the meeting. I'm sorry, he should be here at the meeting. There's a lot of neighbors here, you know, concerned about this piece of property. You know, we've gone through multiple bankruptcy on this property and taken over by certain people. And this is very, very important to us that, you know, it's being taken care of. It doesn't get developed. I mean, he's said that it's not going to be developed for housing. He needs to prove it to us that that's not going to happen, you know?
Sure, I mean, it's two matters. My client did contact the State Ethics...
You don't have to respond if you don't want to.
I mean, I...
It's an opinion.
Perfect, my client did contact the State Ethics Board and was advised that he should not attend the meeting in person.
A violation, why?
It's not a violation, I just said he was advised that he should not attend it. Same thing with his license for food establishment license.
It makes us feel really good, you know, he doesn't show up at the meeting.
He was advised not to.
He was advised not to, but that's ridiculous. I'm sorry.
Let me ask a question, is there anything in this setup, which sounds like it's the same setup as a different company has today, or different ownership, I should say, has today? Is there anything that precludes a transfer of a license under those conditions?
Ask you?
No, I'm asking you because you have all the questions. I'm asking if there's a certain undertone why we should consider not transferring the license with that...
I'm not saying not to transfer the license, Brian, you can't deny that, okay? Transferring the license, he has a right to. As long as he falls into the particular conditions of that license, he agrees to that license.
And the hearing tonight is for the transfer of the license.
That's correct, yeah.
So we need to try to stay within the transfer of the license. I completely understand that a lot of the chatter out there that there is concern. But tonight is the transfer of the license. If there's some other project that come up, that would be planning board, CBA, somewhere else.
Um, disagree, because this morning finally was out there, all the purchase and sale agreements, which is part of this license.
Correct.
Okay, can be discussed because it's a public document. So I can ask questions about that if I want to, because the purchase and sale agreement of the property refers to the transfer of the liquor license.
That it does.
It does.
The hearing is for the transfer, so I'm just-
Pardon me?
The hearing is for the transfer, but I asked if there was a reason with those questions that we should not transfer a license. So that's what I'm trying to understand.
No, I mean, you can't deny it, I mean, there's no reason to deny it.
Okay, so are we asking questions just to ask questions, or is there?
No, Brian, come on. This is very, very important to everybody.
This is our property, we live up there.
You know?
I don't disagree.
I mean-
Somebody that tried to commit and sell it and buy it before. Buy it, try to form an association, make us all join for two million dollars so you can get the hell out of it.
What is before us tonight is the transfer of the liquor license. That is what we are within the rails on this evening. I don't disagree with the concerns. I would not want to see a butters negatively affected. That is a very large, nice community. You have wonderful properties up there, but we are within the transfer of the license this evening.
Okay, and, and as far as the transfer is concerned, there seems to be a clarification on the Old Stone Tower, okay? There's no agreement in place for that transfer. What's the situation with that?
Um, that is owned by a separate, separate historical society parcel.
Yeah, it's owned by a historical commission.
Correct, it's not included as part of the transfer.
But if there's an agreement that needs to be put in place in order for that transfer?
It's a, it's a separate parcel and there's an easement over it. It's a perpetual easement. Um, so like I said, the easement stays in place, that, that's still historical structure. It's not impacted by this.
So what does it say in the purchase and sale agreement that we have to negotiate that?
I, I'm not aware of that.
The stone structure, that didn't catch my eye.
I drafted the purchase and sale agreement.
It's on the, it's in the second part of the agreement of the real estate purchase. Anyways, we don't have to get into that, I guess nobody's concerned about it, but I-
I mean, just as my two cents, I'm also a resident of Lakeville. I actually grew up playing Heritage Hill Golf Course, so I do have to be there. I played Pecoy Brook, I remember El Barren Hills. Um, and as a means of protection for residents, if there ever were to be a conversion of the property to a non-qualifying use as recreational land, such as a real estate development, just like Lakeville Country Club, the property would have to be offered to the town of Lakeville first. Um, so again, I'm here for the transfer of the license to keep it as a restaurant and golf course. Um, but if there ever were a conversion, there would be another hearing just like this one, with Boris Lekman would have a right of first refusal to purchase the property at that point in time. Um, certainly, all of your concerns about that would be perfectly valid at that point in time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else would like to testify on the transfer of the license? No, okay. Uh, do members have any additional questions?
Everything seems to be here.
All right. All right, entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, does anyone want to make a motion on the license itself?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the Common Victular All Alcoholic Beverages License for the Back Nine Club at seventeen Heritage Hill Drive. Is that my motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we should add in the end of the motion to B nine club Inc. Is that correct, B nine club Inc.?
Let me, um, let me rescind my motion and I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the Common Victular License for All Alcoholic Beverages from the Back Nine Club LLC, DBA The Back Nine Club, to B nine club Inc., DBA The Back Nine Club. Is that better?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Um.
Oops, sorry, discussion.
Uh, just under discussion, I also, as the chair does, understands, understand everyone's concerns with the land. I appreciate what Attorney Maderas told us. And, um, you know, if anything changes with the land itself, it's going to have to go through all the different boards, it's going to have to go through a lot. But I, you know, I do know what, um, the Palucci's put on Facebook and said that it's going to remain a golf course, so right now, this is, you know, we kind of have to, we don't have a reason not to approve it. So, um, you know, I really hope that it can become a place, if they're going to put more time, effort, money, energy into it, that, you know, folks will want to frequent. Uh, people always say in Lakeville, there's nowhere to go, there's nowhere to go. So, you know, hopefully we'll all have another watering hole we can go to.
I would love to continue going there for the rest of the time.
Yep.
You're doing great business there. Um, to tag on to what you said, to the residents, I absolutely hear what you're saying. Unfortunately, tonight, we are within very specific, you know, issue. So absolutely send any feedback, make all the boards aware of the concerns. And, you know, should it ever be transferred to a different, coming out of sixty-one E, sixty-one something? You know, we would probably be right back here and listening to, you know, what the residents would like to do. It's a beautiful neighborhood and I hope it continues to do well. And, yeah, I'm with you, I hope it stays as it is. Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. So we got a motion in a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Mr. Maderas, thank you for coming this evening, appreciate it.
Great, appreciate it.
All right, that was five.
Minutes?
Yep, four, okay. Discuss and possible vote to approve the select board minutes of September fifth, twenty twenty-three. All right, any comments on the minutes?
Um, Mr. Chair, I do, um, on page two, um, first paragraph, halfway down, uh, we were discussing, um, about the spaces identified at the Ted Williams Camp due to the functions and elections held at Loom Fawn Lodge. But I think it was key to make sure that we add, um, language that states in the fact we have many elderly residents who utilize those spaces during the elections.
Yeah, that did come up, didn't it?
Right, and I think that was the point that I was making, you know, through my statement, that there, there were quite a few elderly residents that do, um, park there. And then it went on further to, um, say that we would be able to stop the, the charge, I guess.
Yep. Yeah, the gentleman from Genie said that if we could work with them upcoming to elections, to ensure that they were not in service in those days.
So that was just that, and on page six, under the building committee updates, under the fire station building committee, last sentence, um, we will meet on September twenty, twenty-three and discuss how to set up the interviews and whether each candidate will be interviewed or if they will be cut down. I, I just would like to change that just a tad. Um, whether each candidate will be interviewed or if the list to be interviewed will be-
Because you said like one, two, or three, or four, but-
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to bring a man and cut him down-
We're just going to cut, we're just cutting now.
Very seriously, ma'am.
Yeah. We're brutal here in Lakeville, right?
All right, uh, I didn't have anything myself.
I don't either.
Okay. Uh, entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, thank you very much. There'll be no cutting down in Lakeville. Um, all right, on to number six. Discuss and possible vote to approve the articles we placed on the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three special town meeting warrant. This is not warrant review, it is just a quick go-through the articles. Uh, let's see, it looks like we are expecting to do warrant review around October tenth, if nothing changes. All right.
So tonight, we're just voting on the article, we are voting on, okay. Just based on the timeline?
Yeah, and then after this, they'll go off to town council for review?
Yeah, yes, and town councils, town councils, we've seen a number of these anyway.
Okay.
Um, given that the, um, this year's warrant is financial heavy than anything else really, a couple, a couple articles, probably have everybody here in case the board members have questions about specific items.
Okay, all right, appreciate it. Um, do you want to take us through them then?
Todd, you want to come up?
Hi, Todd.
Evening, Todd.
Article one is unpaid bills. Um, we have an article from the, uh, from the Parks Commission, um, regarding, it was invoice that came in late, I believe, correct?
Yes, this was an invoice that came in after the books were closed and it was for last fiscal year for the Park Department for staff T-shirts. So we would ask town meeting to approve this, um, to be funded from park retained earnings. That's the only invoice we have. I know some years we have half a dozen.
I was just going to say, only one this time, that's pretty good.
Twenty dollars, yeah. Um, article two is supplementals. Um, the first two are items that we talked about previously and going through the, um, I remember board considerations, it's money for compensation for the stipends as well as, um, board startup costs like, this is like laptops, it's, it's equipment, laptops, um, and Microsoft three sixty-five subscription, stuff like that. Um, and then, and also at the board's required, board's direction, we put in some, a little bit of money as a placeholder for some type of, um, uh, type of online agenda system. Just to see, yeah. So that, that's what that is.
Yeah, one quick question on that, all right, in the startup cost, the one item we can't really forecast is, um, insurance necessary. So we'll play that by ear.
It was only going to be two months.
Okay.
So hopefully it won't be a big problem, but, you know, but if it is knocked out, that's, that's, you know, a few hundred bucks a month, so.
Yeah.
So that could be substantial.
Okay.
Um, you know, but, but in the scheme of the size of that budget, probably not determinative. Number three is mine from assessors, John, if you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure.
Evening, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Well, thanks.
I believe that we had emailed over a, um, Excel spreadsheet and a memo requesting that, um, let me take a step back here. So our office, um, has a full-time assessment specialist, we have a part-time clerk. The clerk has notified us that she is going to be looking for full-time work. Um, and she is applying for that. Coincidentally, at the same time, our assessment specialist has announced that he is going to be retiring in the spring. So the board's thought was if, um, when this all comes to be at the, for the next fiscal year, it's actually a net savings to the town. But in the meantime, in order to retain our clerk, um, and be able to have adequate coverage, which coincidentally, I think is something the board is kind of concerned about at the assessor's office as well as the other departments, um, we're looking for some additional funds to run through the end of this year so we can start the clerk to be full-time. And it's a few months prior to obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, but a few months prior to the, um, assessment specialist going down to the part-time. So again, you guys have the Excel sheets in front of you, I can go through the numbers if you want, but basically that, that gap is to be able to do this now.
All right.
To the point of the board, it will also give us the ability to make sure that office is staffed um, once the clerk goes full-time, um, for the full hours of the day.
Is it fair to say then, once we roll into FY twenty-five, the number would be closer to where it was? Because he would then have been retired or semi-retired?
It's actually, it'll be less. When you say, yes, definitely closer to where it was, but it'll actually net the town three thousand plus savings going forward.
Okay.
Apple to apple, I mean, that doesn't factor in with cost of living and all the other stuff. But if we compare it to what it is now.
Right.
It's a net savings to the town.
And health insurance is basically a wash because you have one person with health insurance and didn't have before and flips.
Okay, all right.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, through you, um, so the, um, the assessor will be retiring, but on a part-time basis?
Yes, he's going to go down to part-time.
Okay, and then just stay on as part-time?
As part-time.
Okay, so full retirement is not in the near future? Because that way we'd probably have to look to fill that position as a full-time.
It's not, no, it's not in the near future. He has, he has no intent on retiring within the next year or two after that. I mean, the other benefit is when our clerk is on vacation going forward, he's able to come in and, and, and fill in the hours as well, so. You know, it's kind of, the way, the way the board looks at it, it's a win-win all around. I mean, we're going to have better coverage for the office now. We'll have consistency long-term because the clerk has been there for a number of years now. And we're able to keep our assessment specialist who has been there for, Todd, I couldn't tell you how long it's been, it's been decades at this point, so.
Okay.
Okay. Excellent.
So, um, just as a reminder, this sort of follows what we were talking about at our last meeting, was it? That we, um, about the hours? It was, I think, the assessor's office that was-
Thirty?
Yeah, um, six to eight hours less, so, um, and the assessment specialist is out in the field a lot. So by having the clerk there, we'll actually pick up more hours at the, for cus, for, let's say, residents, right?
Correct, yes, that'll give us the ability to, the clerk is in office the entire time other than if she's on vacation or at lunch or whatnot. The assessment specialist needs to do field work. So for the clerk's only part-time, if he has to go out and do field work, which he does on a regular basis, um, there is no one to, to cover the office. We have, our offices, our hours are a little unique, um, based on the fact that it is what it is. We have one and a half employees. And we have an outside firm that we contract with that is, that is in once a week. And when that individual is there, he covers the window, he does whatever, you know, he can at that point, he's in office. But that's only one day a week, um, so this would definitely, um, help with the consistency of office coverage to be able to serve the community.
And you, you estimate with the drop to part-time, all of the field work and stuff, all of that fits within that part-time window?
Correct.
Okay. That's good. All right. Any questions, or should we move on to fire and risk management? All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks, John.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
So, um, fire, um, we, um, as you know, we have an ongoing situation there in terms of coverage and staffing. Um, and overtime is, is a problem because of that. The ideal solution is to add staff. Unfortunately, we don't think that the money's there, at least at this point, to be able to handle the cost of adding one position to the, to each of the shifts. The annual cost would be close to three hundred thousand dollars. Um, so at, at the very least, what we can do is right-size their overtime budget to be able to accommodate the, the current trends. It's a short-term solution.
I know Chief has been looking for solutions for a while now to help with this. And I know it's kind of a team effort, at least, at least with the three of you. So I appreciate that that is ongoing.
Yeah, and we've, we've certainly come to the conclusion that the best solution is to add one person to each of the four working groups. Um, but in terms of the recurring revenue to support that, uh, we're concerned that we don't have that to sustain. But it's certainly something we'll be looking at as we develop the FY twenty-five budget.
Okay. Sir?
For, for me, I understand, I understand their, their difficulties and, because it comes down to budgeting, it's, it's based on, you know, we have to live within our, our, our resources and we have to live within the cap, the, our two and a half percent. Um, so it's difficult, it's difficult to come up with the reciprocal savings of changing the staffing model. And, and just applying a new staffing model, which would be a four-person group to last year's leave records, um, we would be saving in the neighborhood of about two hundred thousand dollars in overtime. So it's, you know, it's, but it's difficult to, to stick your neck out and promise that kind of savings when there's so many other variables involved. Uh, one injured firefighter, one resignation, one, one, uh, you know, whatever the, the next problem might be, and they all seem to keep on coming. But looking backwards, that's, that's what we would have saved last year, which is a considerable amount. Then in, in the addition of, of overtime, it's, it's welcome, but it's like giving somebody with a broken arm add, but they're going to feel a little bit better, but it doesn't really fix the problem. And the problem for me is, is we have three people on duty at, at the fire station and that's the bare minimum that we need to operate right now in balance with our callback. That's what, you know, when that car accident happened earlier on, right? Three people aren't enough to, to handle that car accident. You call people back and you saw the fire engine, fire engine go by five minutes later. That's the people coming in from home, staffing apparatus going to the scene. So when there's any absence for any reason, it creates a corresponding overtime expense. And what, what the solution would be, that addition that Todd mentioned, that one person per group, would give us, our, our bare minimum's still three. And so changing, changing our policy as far as replacing person for person provides that net savings. And, and just running the numbers against what we've done, our historical data, two hundred thousand dollars is a significant savings. It, it doesn't equal our expense, but it, it does cancel out a lot of it, so.
Would you be able to speak to, um, just quality of life improvements the department might see with four?
So we were able to function the way we do based on a small group of very dedicated firefighters. Um, there are a lot of firefighters that contribute a little bit, but we have a core group that contribute a great deal. And they're getting, they're getting burned out. And so I, I'll have more money to contribute to them being burnt out, to be blunt. Um, but that's not necessarily what's sustainable for the town, it's not sustainable for, for our employees or, or for me. It's just, uh, it's, this is a problem that needs to be addressed and, and, um, because it, there will be more problems down the line. I think a lot of- I think a lot of the dysfunction or a lot of the overtime is related to the burden that's placed on, on some of these people. It's the, you know, whether it's an injury or an illness or things like that. So I just, we, it's really imperative that we, we reinvent our department to match the demand for our services and the expectations of the public.
We can expect that probably through the budget cycle, what that picture's gonna look like.
It is a real problem, we just, we just couldn't, we, we just couldn't in good conscience commit to that right now, knowing, knowing what new growth is looking like and what our real situation's gonna look like.
I think the original theory was, it was advantageous to, to spread it over two fiscal years, and that way it wouldn't be as much of a single one-time impact, is that correct?
That was, that was the thought, yeah.
Yeah. And you've, you've authorized actions to improve our situation, because we continue to see healthy revenue numbers. Our revenue has outpaced our growth in our operations budget uh by uh by several hundred thousand dollars, so, so five years ago, um, our, we're offsetting more of our revenue, our operations budget today than we were five years ago. We're less of a burden, like, less of our operations budget comes from real estate and, uh, than it did five years ago, which is, which is, I'm proud of, but there was a, a a reason for that, there's a reason why we did that, because we knew that we were dealing with a fire department that was kinda under-resourced. And we knew that the enhancements that we needed to make are gonna cost money and be expensive. And so fine-tuning our, our revenue sources, our, our EMS billing was, was just necessary for us to just keep pace with what the department needed.
Any thoughts?
Well, I mean, I'd like to comment that both police and fire apply for every grant they can. I mean, you see the work that went into the ambulance, so it's not like, you know, for the folks at home, both police and fire are constantly applying for grants, for whether it's equipment or, you know, um, that's always something good for folks to know, um, that we're not just counting on real estate taxes, but the folks that work for those, both chiefs, and they have their, you know, respective people that they work with in their departments are constantly applying for grants and, you know, whether they're equipment, money, whatever, so. I think we have sort of, I think the chief's been able to make the office very efficient, but we're still, you know, need to come up with some money, so.
I won't ask you for a figure tonight, but as you're all working through figuring out what fits and what doesn't fit, can you also maybe just run together, like, what it costs to bring a new hire up to speed, going through all the academies and such? So every time we do burn somebody out, is that a five thousand dollar hit, a twenty thousand dollar hit, plus hours away to go get trained up?
So, uh, an academy's, like, a firefighter works an average of forty-two hours a week. We have like one firefighter in the academy right now, and because we're at bare bones minimum, every hour that he was scheduled to work is now.
Overtime.
Overtime. Um, we have another academy, uh, firefighter starting in the academy in January. That's gonna be, another person that's gonna be replaced by overtime. And then, um, come, come the spring, my, you know, my, what, what's the, what's the driver is, is basically anything, if, if we had, you know, if we're averaging eight or nine calls a day, ten calls sometimes plus, if we had any less than three people on duty, every single one of those calls would be a recall. And I might get one person, two people, or ten people, uh, because of just the contractual obligations and because we have to operate and have enough people there in short order that we cast a little bit wider net than we would, because we don't have the time and there isn't anybody back at the station to call people one by one and, and just right, have a right-sized response. So it's either really high or really low or just enough, it's, it's not an efficient thing, but it's kind of our necessity because of the way we do things.
Okay, I got a lot of thoughts going into it, you always seem to have the numbers ready and waiting, uh, so.
They might not be right, but, but I believe in them.
Just do something. All right, uh, if there's no other questions, then we'll carry on with the other items.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right.
So the last item, uh, in terms of supplementing the FY twenty-four operating budget is um uh, the risk management line, so this is um for insurance premiums, for property insurance, liability insurance, and various other general insurance. When we developed the budget, we, we used a six percent increase as our guide. Uh, when the actual premiums uh flushed out and we got our, our invoices, um, in June, it was six point three percent. So this variance of about seventy-five hundred represents that small delta in our estimate versus um, what the actual cost uh of all the various insurance premiums in total are.
Strictly on the cost side, not changing any coverage or anything like that?
And I'm pretty sure through you, Mr. Chair, that every, we streamlined everything. I think every single one of those policies was looked at a couple of years ago to exclude, you know, little fences that the town could repair that didn't need to be insured and so, again, we've been quite efficient in that, that.
And, and I'm misremembering that there was a possibility going out to rebid carriers?
We've talked about that, yes.
We haven't executed it.
Yeah, but, yeah, we haven't done that yet, but it, it's on my list.
All right. Um, any other questions, or on to Article Three?
I'm good.
Good?
I'm good, yep.
Article Three?
So these are mostly, these are all capital, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the first one was in the CIP, uh, seventy thousand dollars for Betty's neck. Now, be advised that we did receive the state earmark for seventy thousand dollars, this would double that. Um, what's going to hap, we have an outstanding application under the, with the current version of MasterCard, whose name I keep forgetting.
That's the One Stop Program?
One Stop, thank you, jeez, um, the One, One Stop Program, um, which would, you know, probably negate this need if we got it, but the, the, um, but uh, we, we did state in the application that we had seventy thousand investment in the CIPs, we wanted to be true to that. Um, so, you know, worst comes to worst, we'll have, you know, if we don't get the, the One Stop Grant, we'll have a hundred and forty thousand to go towards Betty's neck, which would be sufficient to take care of the, of the barn.
All right.
And maybe then some.
Okay, any questions on that, or keep going?
I'm good.
Uh, the second item is, um, I'm sorry, excuse me, second item is town hall security items, I communicated with you about that, with, with three of you about that offline, rather, um, for, you know, for confidentiality purposes, not into it too much, but it does involve uh, building access in, in town hall. The third item is um, um, uh, motor replacement on one, on the police boat, which I believe we also moved the boat to the, to surplus boat, surplus the boat, motor to fire, correct?
Yes.
Sure, if you'd like, sure.
As you're aware, we have a um, a two thousand nineteen uh police boat that we use to patrol Long Pond. Since that time, uh, it's become a dual-purpose boat, uh, it's become a search and rescue dive boat as well, um, with the implementation of the dive team. Um, we've discovered that the boat is under power when we have, when we use it for dive operations, when we put extra people on the boat with all the tanks and dive equipment, uh, it's, it can't even get out of the water, it's slow going to where we need to dive, doesn't get up on plane. Um, so to rectify that problem, uh, they suggest we, uh, go to the Max um motor, which would be a one fifteen, um, which, and install a trim tab kit, which would alleviate that problem. Uh, because the motor's so new, um, we suggested instead of just either trading it in or um keeping it as a spare, um, we would repurpose that uh to the fire department and put our motor on the fire department boat, which would bring that, um, that boat up to a, a better power and uh re-control it and possible bodywork to put the new motor on that. And that's where we are.
All right.
I need to pick a vote.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, any questions or?
Four and five are public works related.
All right. Evening, Director. All right, so we got MS four permitting and brush tree removal.
Uh, MS four permitting is pretty straightforward, um, we're going into year six. In meeting with Todd, rather than going to fall meeting and then spring meeting for additional funding, we've kinda put them together. Um, and then a lot of these things that'll, that will be beginning um prior to July will carry over also. Includes annual tradings, um, stoma, updating our stoma auto management plan. Um, we're also gonna be doing all illicit discharge detections. The numbers gives us room to get us all the way to the annual report of July of, I mean, September of twenty-four. Um, but there's no real telling of what the number's gonna be. Once we start getting into um catchment investigations and illicit discharge um investigations and things like that, it kinda, you hope everything goes well, if it doesn't, then you gotta kinda start investigating those things and possibly putting in different practices or different structures and, you know, that's, that's where um it's kinda known, this is, this is kinda covering all the knowns. And, and we've been pretty lean with the MS four, we've, we've been keeping up with with what absolutely has to be done, um, but we're getting to a point now where we kinda have to stop putting our best foot forward and kind of addressing some of those, the key things that we've kinda let slide back over the last couple of years. And the brush, um, so that's uh basically brush removal, tub grinding, so we, we're gonna hire a crew to come in and do tub grinding, we did it, I believe in two thousand twenty, I wanna say it was the last time, it's every couple of years, um, there really is no money in the operating budget to, to dispose of it. So every couple of years, we hire a tub grinder, typically through Sersage, although they don't have the bid this year for that. And also the rental of an excavator, which we'll need on-site, so this work will be done with a contractor using tub grinder and their crew, and also the DPW will be assisting the transfer station to run the excavator and do all the cleanup and, um, all the cleanup after the tub grinder moves out.
Is this the area that's in the back where all that, yeah, that's a little scary back there?
Yeah, it's get to be a bit much, yeah.
I go back there, 'cause I had never been back there, and on the other side of Lakeville, I never saw.
Yeah, no deer never moves.
It never does. Okay.
Any questions? All right, all right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. I think we got you a little later, too, right?
So the five capital items total two hundred and one thousand five hundred, and uh the brush and tree removal would be funded from the transfer station retained earnings.
Okay.
The rest we're proposing to come from free cash.
Um, speaking of free cash, Article Four, um, as you recall, we negotiated that lease on the cell tower in Fern Street. Uh, we received a one-time payment of two million one hundred fifty thousand dollars to ensure that we don't spend it in a frivolous manner. Um, this, uh, this article would move that money to, um, via capital project, capital stabilization fund for future use. Um, considering we could help fund some of the capital projects that are pending out there.
If I can, I'd like to speak to this one.
Sure.
Um, because we negotiated uh or agreed that we would receive a one-time um payment for the use of the cell tower, the lease of the cell tower, uh, we lost, what, forty-five thousand?
Yeah, that sounds about right, Lorraine.
Revenue?
It's in the forties, yep.
So, um, you know, accounting for that, we're already now forty-five thousand dollars, um, you know, behind in our, you know, going forward next, you know, for this coming fiscal year, right? So I know at the time I had brought up that I would like to see this money go somewhere where we could um have some interest-bearing, um, or, you know, so it could work for us and, and not touch it.
Right, okay, you're making me do math here, aren't you?
I am. Yep, um.
So stabilization does serve that purpose, um.
But this board is only here for as long as we're elected. So going forward, um, you know, this is, what, a twenty years, correct? This is a twenty-year con, uh, agreement. Um, so this board will change, but I want the message that, um, if we're getting interest, let this money work for us in the best way possible. But I don't want it to be available for any capital, 'cause this, once this money's gone, it's gone.
Um, so the alternative would be to put it into the general stabilization account?
Yep, we could alternatively.
Remember, it would require a town meeting to use this money in any case.
Right.
So, uh, you know, I would point out, you, you're correct about losing that, it's, it's about thirty-eight thousand a year, I believe. Um, but the, um, it also, just to be clear, the FY twenty-four budget, this is budget, I, I think you know this, but I just wanted to state for, for the record, FY twenty-four budget does not assume any of that money. We meet, the FY twenty-four budget, for that part, we already knew that two point one million was coming, we'd gone off the budget without that money.
Okay, so I'll take that back, that we're not in the hole, right, forty, whatever it is, okay. Um, but my concern is, is, I mean, is there some way that we can vote to establish a designated account? Specifically to transfer that money in, where?
Other than a stabilization type fund, you mean?
Right, I, I mean, I want it to be interest-bearing.
So any of the, the general stabilization or special stabilization funds are invested separately and the earnings stay with, grow within the fund? And we do have, you know, more options to invest because we know that we'll have the funds there longer than operating funds, so.
Treasurer uses, it feels like CDs and stuff like that.
So, uh, the, the thinking here was that we've got a number of, for example, facility projects that the town's considering, whether it's the, a fire station, the town hall, senior center addition, not to mention uh, schools, educational needs, so that this, that some of those projects uh might require a debt exclusion vote at some point. And that setting these aside for future capital might at least allow us to offset, set, for example, the design costs and not ask the taxpayers to.
So to, to your point, Lorraine, we need to bear somewhere around one point eight to two percent to make up for that, like forty thousand or so per year, if we wanted to watch it grow, and I could use it, somewhere around there.
I just think that, you know, we need to start finding ways that we can put money aside, you know, for the future, I mean, if this does gain interest, you know, for twenty years, I mean, that's, could be.
I know we've got a general stabilization fund, do we have any debt stabilization right now, specifically debt?
We do, um, we have about uh, one point four million.
One point four, and there's, is it two-ish in the general?
And the general stabilization has about one point eight, and we added two fifty, I believe, this year, so.
Yeah, two is the number, I remember.
Yeah.
I remember that.
We have a fiscal policy that it, it leaves it up.
So that would bring this, the, if this went into debt stabilization, now bring that to what, three point five, three point six-ish?
Correct, yes, correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So I too like, Lorraine was a little surprised to see this, because I actually thought the first thing that I think it was we suggested, or Lorraine might have suggested, was to make sure all our retirement needs were met, I thought you had mentioned that. And then the other thing I thought that we had said was the same, what Lorraine just exactly said, so I think I have to be sold on this going, 'cause that wasn't what, what we were thinking during when we approved the um contract. I thought when we approved the contract, we did say exactly what Lorraine just said, that um we wouldn't use the money, so I'm with her on this.
So this article is proposing to set it aside?
Yep.
It would be up to town, some future town meeting to decide whether to withdraw any or all of those funds.
So it would stay protected, and then it would be up to this or a future select board to propose an article to pull some out of there?
Yep, and the general, just to re- refresh your memory, the general stabilization could be accessed at, on town meeting floor, that has happened in the past.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, 'cause right now it's vulnerable, sitting in free cash.
Correct.
Yep, yep, um, so, you know, to protect it, right, and I, I figured that's where you were going with this, but I, you know, I mean, you are, you know, both you gentlemen are, are, you know, money.
Experts.
Experts, financial, yep, wizards. Um, and how we can get this money to work for us the best way we can without.
Um, and how we can get this money to work for us the best way we can without touching it. Because I really, I mean, once it's in a, you know, in a a, I guess, just a fund, it's not, I mean, does it say in that fund that this was, or it just becomes one lump?
Right.
Does.
Yeah, see, I.
See, what would happen if you didn't do anything with it, it'll just roll back into free cash again next year. And then you'd have a new another another inflated free cash number. This way, taking out the general fund, you're putting it aside and it basically basically nothing will happen to it until somebody decides to touch it.
Right. And I agree with that concept. I just don't know that this is the best place to to put it.
What other options would it be?
Yeah, well, that's that's the thing. What other options? Because let's say this board is completely different, which has happened in recent history. Um, you know, they could say, oh, look at all this money. Let's do all these projects and, you know, they don't know why we felt so strongly that we shouldn't do that because we know it was money that we were going to be getting as income every year. Um, so.
If if that's the board's concern, the interest-bearing aspect of it, then putting it toward OPEB or something is not the answer. Because the the that you do that, then it's just off the books entirely.
No, we didn't. I don't think that was the.
No, I say. Retirement, it was retirement.
Yeah, I think the question we asked was, are we making, you know, are we doing okay? And I think we're ahead of where we're supposed to be, aren't we, on that?
This is our pension obligation?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that is starting to come down, but we still have several years.
Right. The pension is not our decision, the the rate of that, that's it's a county program. OPEB, we do get to decide, but.
Yes, right.
I mean, I kind of like putting this in a, you know, protected account too, where we know new growth is slowing significantly. You know, if there is something that comes up where it's like, this is really a a need to have, not a want to have. We at least have the the option of residents to say, yes, we're willing to pull some out of that. And while it's in there, generates some interest.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's I think it's it's safer than just throwing it into general stabilization. It'll have a purpose, I guess.
Right. I mean, if it was a, you know, if we voted to establish a designated account um for stabilization with do not touch after it.
DOR has.
Ever.
DOR has certain rules about what kind of stabilization accounts you can create. Um, so you you know, you you have, if you want to create either general stabilization or capital stabilization, destabilization. I don't think there's any kind of special trust you can create under DOR rules.
No, I mean, there are other types of special stabilizations, but they're all they all would require a town meeting access.
Right, exactly. But if it if this was the only thing in there.
Yep.
And it was gaining interest. And those words do not touch for twenty years. We're on it.
When's the last time we pulled from the existing?
I I don't I don't think it's legally possible for a board to prevent a future board from doing something that this board doesn't want it to do.
No, I understand. No, I get it. I get it. So I'm just, you know, I'm just putting the message out there.
There are ways to make it harder. That you're putting in stabilization requires explicit discussion and, you know, require, you know, it's town meeting has to put it in, town meeting has to take it out. Town meeting can't take it out from just capital stabilization unless there's a recommendation to take it out capital stabilization. General is a little different. That's it's a tad looser. So that's why we thought capital would be a good place to put it.
Right. And I I would I would definitely want um our residents to have the final say uh over their money and how it's spent. But I think as we are, I guess, the guardians of um, you know, trying to make smart decisions, that if we come up with a solution to put this money in a designated account that would require town meeting vote.
Well, we'll go into the one point four already there, which is already generating interest.
Yep.
And then would have to be another article at a future meeting that we would have to approve or future board has to approve. And then residents have to approve as well. So there'll be at least two votes to get anything out of there at all. And I don't know if any of us know the last time we used anything out of that account.
Uh, we just.
Oh, it was.
It was a few years ago. It wasn't a lot of money, but it was a few years ago. Yeah, seventy-nine thousand or so.
Oh, a small number then.
It wasn't a large amount from general.
So we will remember.
But but that's not to say.
You know what tomorrow brings.
Right, but we will remember and um I guess every budget cycle and when we talk about what we have in our balance of, you know, if the if the town does vote to put this in here, um, that we will remember that twenty-one, you know, two million one hundred.
It it will still go through official warrant review. We'll have FinCom weigh in and they'll give a recommendation or not.
And the capital capital improvement committee as well. So this gives another another level of approval.
I still think it's risky putting it in just and lumping it in there, but um, so I may not be supporting that unless we have a designated account for that.
Okay. Should we go to five?
Yes, please.
Okay. So five, Article five are the recommendations from the CPC for um this year's uh election. Um, I'm just getting this here if you have any questions, but you know, these are.
Want to tell us about your projects?
Because we're both by the CPC, so, yeah.
For the ones that you're recommending? Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, this is our first year and this is our first, our committee has voted to recommend these three projects. We spent our first year writing the plan. Um, all paperwork for these three projects are online, so anybody can go and look to see the whole intricate paperwork. Um, I feel like we should have some kind of a handout for town meeting also because this really doesn't tell the whole story. So I think we'll work on that. And it's kind of exciting. We went around and talked to all the boards and pretty much solicited projects. And this is what came forward. Uh, it's pretty self-explanatory. The cemetery commission is um going for um national historic register. And this is probably just one step. This isn't the whole thing. It's just one step. Uh, the historic townhouse already has a mass historic grant and thirty thousand from the town, so they have sixty thousand dollars already. Which I think is really important to make our CPA funds go further is to have projects that have other funding and just don't come to us for the whole thing or help. Um, is what if we just help get projects along, they have other funding, our money goes farther. Um, so this money, this thirty thousand dollars, um, it was made very clear and you can see in their application, this is just in case something goes wrong. Because they got an estimate for sixty thousand dollars to do the roof on the historic townhouse. Well, as I can say with the roof on Betty's neck, when they pulled it off and saw there was no plywood underneath, there was an extra forty. Now, that's a huge building, but it was extra forty thousand dollars right off the bat to do it correctly. So this money or a portion of it would just be sitting there to help if anything went wrong. Because they feel like they have enough money, but they don't want to get in a situation like we did with the Peach Barn.
Quick question if I may first, Nancy.
Yep.
It's a question for Todd, I think. So CPA is still being new and these being our first projects. Let's say that got passed a town meeting and they didn't need that overage of thirty. I know normally these capital plans go into like its own account and then later on you have a vote to move it back. Would this move back into the CPA fund or?
So in in this example, you'll see it's being funded from two on the far right.
Mm-hmm.
So if it was not needed or not used, uh twelve thousand would go back to the reserve for historic resources in the balance.
Okay.
To undesignated.
All right, good.
And the C- the CPC would advise me at the end of the year, they'd say these projects are completed
Mm-hmm.
and you can close the balance. They don't lose the funds. It just makes the funds available for new, to be repurposed for new projects.
That's good. Thank you for teaching us that.
And and typically, we'll be seeing this sort of thing at the annual town meeting. So we'll see the CPC's budget and the the reserves, the set asides that are required as well as their proposed projects. But again, as Nancy said, where it's their fir- first year, we're sort of just ramping up and getting this in place before we set the tax rate.
Nice. Okay. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. And the um park commission, a lot of projects, the park commission's looking for money to redo John Pond Park. Um, as you probably all know, with the state, they're looking for, when the money comes, there's always not a lot of time to get ready. When the money comes, if you have a shovel-ready project, you have a much better chance of getting that that money. So this money they're asking for for the um design, um for the architectural plans, we'll give them a shovel-ready project so they can jump on any grants that come along to try to get that done at John Pond Park, which is a priority, I think, for the Parks Department. They've been talking about that for a long time.
All right. Any questions for Nancy?
This will be up to people at Towne Lakeville.
Yeah, exciting.
Great. I'll do my best to present it.
This is the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good night.
Okay, um, Article six. Um, Article six is uh the board directed, I don't remember when, since it was earlier this year, and to uh to move, uh, to to an article for fall town meeting to move town, annual town meeting to um the second Monday in June. Um, so this accomplishes that task.
And if I understand correctly, does that, we still have some wiggle room with something? Honestly, Ju- June, we probably wouldn't want to push it, but the language today allows us, it's necessary to push from.
The board could, the board could, the the board still has the ability to move the, to move meeting at the earlier.
Okay. I mean, historically, we hardly ever actually met on the.
You're obviously not going to want to be after the end of June because you've got a budget to adopt.
Right, right. But it doesn't, it's not locked on that day in case something were to happen.
Okay.
Can we go back?
Oops, I want to go.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Um, so if, I didn't think we could go before what's in the bylaw.
Do a special before, but you can't do the annual.
Right. You could do a special before, but not the annual.
Right.
Okay. But at least now, and I know that we did talk about this, but you know, I was kind of thinking about it, at least now we could push the meeting, you know, down the road if we had to, but if we have this, it doesn't give us a whole lot of time for um.
Vote up to the board. You directed me to put.
A mistake. Yep.
Yep, I remember.
Yeah, the calendar seemed to work way better with this, especially with the turnover of a governor.
Yeah, I the the there's the the level of information over the past, gosh, at least ten years now, say ten years, when it comes to the state budget. Um, if you have your town meeting in May, you're you still have a lot of questions.
Uh, any other questions on six? Onto seven?
Seven is a amendment to the fire alarm system bylaw. Since this isn't warrant review, if you want to do the quick, the quick, like a quick.
This is a similar language to what the police have in our bylaws. Essentially, this is uh nothing more than a a tool for compliance. It's not really my mentality or my practice to hammer people with fines and write tickets. Um, but sometimes the existence of that ability uh compels people to to do what they have to do, what they're supposed to do. And that's what this is about. Uh, there's a lot of uh May and and not too many showers in here, which gives me the the uh allows me to apply judgment.
Has this been a problem that's been getting worse in recent years or?
Two hundred and three um false alarms and malfunctions so far this year.
Just this year?
Yeah. And so getting back to overtime expense and things like that, um, we cross-staff our apparatus. So when we're in our fire trucks, the ambulance is empty. Uh, so this is definitely a public safety issue. So anything I can do to compel people to do a better job maintaining their systems benefits everybody in this town.
All right. Appreciate it.
Um, and you can't not treat a fire alarm on a like big residence, like an apartment building or an industrial building or something, you can't just say.
If somebody's fire alarm went off and I showed up with a pickup truck or a cheese car, we would be open the town up to considerable liability and and you'd probably have to hire a new fire chief.
Okay. Um, but again, just, you know, uh, we haven't had this because we haven't had this kind of a problem really, but now with more residents, more apartment buildings, more of everything, we gotta sort of conform here.
There's a lot of year left too.
Yeah.
That number.
Yep. That's a lot of false alarms in one year.
For various reasons. Some some are malicious, some are accidental activations, some are uh system malfunctions. Um, but there are all, there's there's things that you can do to prevent all of that.
Yep. But that's why it says May.
May, yeah.
May. So if you really feel like a company is doing their best to try to correct their system, then you don't have to give them the fine.
Perfect example would be LeBaron Country Club. They had problems with their sprinkler system and fire alarm system that I inherited as I came in. And it took us almost a year and a half to two years to to get everything straightened out. And we haven't had a a system malfunction alarm there in probably the past year and a half uh because we've worked with them and we we got their system working properly and we're very we were engaged with them and we helped them get to where they needed to be. That's an example of somebody that's in compliance, as far as I'm concerned.
Any other questions for the chief? No? Nice. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything tonight.
I feel like I should change you in time, but I should have stayed long.
All right, moving on.
Mr. Resnick, Article eights, nine, and ten are planning board articles.
Evening, Mark.
Hello, everybody.
Mark, you want to give a general view of them?
Okay, the first article is the open space residential development bylaw, um, which we've discussed a couple of times before. Uh, this is uh similar to a bylaw that was presented a year and a half ago, but with some significant changes to address specifically concerns from the conservation commission and the Board of Health. Conservation commission had some concerns about um the permanent restriction of uh so for the open spaceland, that it can't be uh sold or developed in the future. So there's a restriction called Article ninety-seven, which would require to go back to the legislature for their approval, which, as you know, is quite cumbersome. Um, and then uh a requirement that wetlands be delineated even at the preliminary plan stage so that you can ensure um that uh the lots under the preliminary conventional plan uh are compliant for your base um uh uh s- plan, um subdivision plan. The uh the other um Board of Health concerns had to do with wells and septic located on the same lots. Um, if they're not precisely located on smaller lots, you can run into problems with well contamination um or uh lots that can't be developed um if uh uh septic systems are improperly located. Um, and they also had um a concern about ensuring that you can prove that all the conventional lots truly could be conventional lots, large seventy thousand square feet. So we added some extra testing requirements for those lots. Um, there's some smaller changes and and other additions in here, but uh um it's very similar to a draft that we reviewed at prior meeting.
Um, I feel like this, I've I've shared this with you before, but I think this is one where we really need some kind of example sheet or something to.
Yes.
Let every educate everybody on what this means, what this could look like, because.
There's there's definitely part on Mr. Resnick.
Okay, yeah. We do have to put um a little explanation of zoning articles since I've been here and what they are together for town meeting. But what I put together for this will be a a little more involved too. I'll try and make it simple so it's easier to see like a comparison chart between the two. Um, so.
Like if if I were to attempt to distill it and I mean, so nothing smaller than twenty acres.
That's correct.
You'd take it that twenty acre parcel, ten acres gets turned into open space.
Mm-hmm.
It's only the remaining ten acres that can be developed on smaller lots than we require today. So you'd have ten acres of contiguous something.
Mm-hmm.
Could be forest land, could be a park, could be whatever, but no houses there.
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mark?
So this document that was handed to us with the red line.
I haven't read that yet.
Um, the planning board has reviewed this.
That's correct.
Open space, they've um obviously they've um worked to develop this with you. So have they voted their recommendations?
Yes. So the planning board voted this with the few of the red line changes, those extra red line changes were some things that they removed from uh this document at the last meeting. Um, so if you want, I can just highlight those. They were in one of the previous documents that you reviewed. Um, so one of them uh had to do with the purpose. We had four purpose sections for the bylaw. Um, they removed one of them because uh one of the board members objected to the statement that uh. that, uh, OSRDs are superior to conventional plans. They're different than conventional plans. They're not always superior, so they thought that should be changed. So it's not a rewriting it. We just removed it. Um, on page two, there was, um, we had talked about, um, allowing some smaller than twenty acre, uh, parcels to be developed. Um, one is if they were along one of the, uh, the large ponds. Um, and the other, uh, would be, um, uh, if the land you're, you're, um, the open space land abuts existing open space land, and you can combine it with that. But the Planning Board felt that we're adding a little too much complexity here and we just, um, we wanna, they wanna get a, a good bylaw in. And if we feel that we should make some changes in the future, we can always come back to Town Meeting with some additions. So that was removed. Um, there was a reference to, um, a section five, which should be Article Five on the next page. And then, um, for public access to the, um, open space, um, we added, um, there was a question about, well, we don't want motorized vehicles on the open space, but what happens if someone has a motorized wheelchair? And you want them to allow to be, to access, uh, a trail you might have that might be accessible. So we added, um, that in, and I believe those are the, the four red line changes that the Planning Board made at their meeting last Thursday, which they then voted, um, and was submitted to you.
Any other quick questions?
Um.
I've got one more.
Not questions, but I will offer a statement that I, um, I, I have a, I, I think that my fellow board members have also indicated that, you know, we're, we struggle a little bit with, uh, with, uh, subjective. And I, I think I agree here with what the, you know, uh, whose opinion is it su- superior? I mean, I had these same exact things all highlighted in my notes that it looks like they've corrected. But for the record, I know that, um, a lot of boards still, I know it may have passed through some boards, but I know that some boards, you know, aren't really thrilled with this open space bylaw. So, um, I think when we're, we present it to, uh, the residents, this is one that I would definitely like to see posted early so people have the opportunity to read through it and ask questions at the reviews. Um, you know, some folks say that, well, it's a way to dissuade forty B. I don't know if that's necessarily true. Um, so I would just love to see us make sure we put this out, even if it's on social media where people will see it and not just on the town's website. Um, I think it's important. That is all.
The question I have, I'm not sure how to ask it actually, but, um, what? So if it was a decent sized parcel and a decent open space portion arrives, that could be transferred to, looks like Conservation Commission, Select Board, could come under the care of Parks. How do we determine what is the ongoing cost to the town for these new spaces for upkeep and such? Right? So do we have to toss Director Moniz some more money to have more lawn mowers and have more people that, you know, can create, yeah, not create, go there and maintain them? I mean, I don't, I, I understand the concept. I'm just trying to think, what other hidden costs could there be in this down the road? If all of a sudden a bunch of developers decide to utilize this and create twenty more parks that we hadn't actually planned for?
Right.
Um, like, is that, is there somewhere in the process that figures that out? Puts any money aside in a, an account for future care or?
Uh, no, but I think that's part of the process that the Planning Board would, in reviewing, um, a proposed development, would be the discussion of whether there are additional maintenance costs and whether, um, you know, the Board would be in favor of having a park developed versus having it remain open space. There's huge difference in, in maintenance costs.
Right.
Between the two. So I think that discussion, um, would occur at that time. You know, and it would be specific to the individual piece of land in the parcel, so.
And, and at what point in this process, right, because right now, you know, Select Board is what it is today, the Planning Board is what it is today, and who knows in the future if they get along or whatnot. Thankfully, we do now. Um, but where in that process does, do we figure out, okay, here's the plan that's come in. Who is going to actually accept ownership of this before someone just says, great plan, stamp it? And then, oh, that's going to take one and a half more employees to maintain.
Well, this is, um, it's a multi-step process. So you have to understand that the, the developer needs to come in for just informal. It can be with a sketch plan, a GIS map printed off of Google and some, just for the general discussion. So that's like this first step. Then they have to file a preliminary plan and an OSRD concept plan. And that's where you're going to evaluate the open space. You're going to evaluate the suitability of the lots under the conventional plan. Remember, that sets the baseline for the number of lots. So if you have thirty acres and you're gonna, you can prove you have ten, ten acres of, I mean, ten house lots, you know, fifty percent, that's approximately fifty percent of the land area. Um, you know, that's, that's where some of those preliminary discussions would occur. Um, also, that is a public hearing and, um, we do send those, uh, those notices around to the other boards and we would have those discussions. Obviously, the final, um, definitive subdivision plan and special permit hearings, um, is where that would all be. Um, and again, those are sent out to the, all the other boards and committees to review, and that's where the final discussions and decisions would be made, so.
To Brian's point, though, we could send all the recommendations we want, that we don't want any more parks because we know that eventually it's going to end up on our DPW. But I feel like we're opening a can of worms there because there's no real way to, you know, um, and that's gonna, if we don't take care of them, then we're gonna, and someone gets hurt, we're gonna get sued. Even if we do take care of them, so that's my biggest, you know, that's another one of these things with this that, um, and I think that was brought up, too, the last time it was at Town Meeting. I thought it was, or it was brought up in a review, that we can't have a, a park. So we have four of these neighborhoods, let's say, in town. That's four more what are supposed to be parks, which may never be taken care of after the initial developer is done with it and it falls to the town. So I, I still have, you know, some concerns, but I don't know that tonight's the night to hash it out, but, um.
No, and I know a ton of work has gone into this, not.
Right.
I'm not trying to be the negative Nancy here, just trying to figure out, like, what, what does our risk turn into down the road if the developers come in and say, we're gonna, we've got this nice field, we're gonna put in a playground for the residents here and then transfer it to you guys. Hey, look at what Gamash just took to renovate. That's one. I'd love to have a playground in my backyard, absolutely. Um, I just want to make sure that somewhere in this approval process, you know, the checks and balances have happened. Um, so that, you know, by the time that that plan's approved, Concom has said, yes, we will accept ownership or the Select Board, whomever it might be, or what happens if two say they want it? What's, where's the tiebreaker? I mean, otherwise, the concept is nice.
Well, I mean, if, if, um, the Select Board of the Parks Commission won't accept the land for a park, then, um, you know, then it would be for open space land. It would be left as, and so even if it's a field that could be used, I mean, it would probably be left to grow, you know, and left alone, it wouldn't be cut, and eventually would become woodland, so, um, in conservation land. And so.
Right.
You know? That would be the alternative.
That's a point.
Hmm?
That's a point.
It, it absolutely is a point, um, just not convinced that we know ahead of time. By the time it's gone through the planning process itself, recommendations are recommendations. Same thing happens with us with Chapter sixty-one stuff. We get the recommendations. We could vote one way or the other.
Except the Planning Board can't bind the Select Board or the Parks Commission to accept the property, so, um.
Yeah, so I guess this, this.
So that, that would be part of the, the review. And, um, it says in here that they would have to go to the Select Board first to get a vote for acceptance if it was to go to the Select Board for, um, for a park.
Does that have to be in place prior to the plan being approved?
I believe so.
Okay. All right, okay. So that's kind of what I'm asking.
Right.
Where in the process?
Mm-hmm.
So if it is in there, that's, that's good. Need a flow chart on this one.
Yes, there's a lot, there's a lot in here, so.
Right, it's always something that can be amended later.
Okay, so, um, Articles Nine and Ten, yeah?
Yes, please.
One more?
So Article, nine. Article nine is just to clarify, um, the definition that we have for changeable copy signs, electronic message boards, and internally illuminated signs. Um, that although it's, it's under the section for special permits and implies that it is by the zoning board of a special permit for the zoning board of appeals, they wanted to just literally add by the zoning board of appeals to the end of the sentence. So, it's a clarification.
Mr. Newsy?
And Article ten is, um, to, for those same types of signs, changeable copy signs, electronic message boards, and internally illuminated signs. The, um, the Planning Board was concerned about the proliferation that we have of some of these signs. Um, and that, um, that, uh, they wanted to ensure that they, because they are bright and they can be flashing or when they change and could be annoying, that when they're, um, adjacent to residential, uh, zoning, um, or residential, uh, properties, um, if it's directly across the street or next door, that they would be prohibited. Um, so this would still allow these types of signs in our main commercial areas such as, uh, Route Forty-four or the, uh, end of Main Street, uh, up by, um, uh, near Middleborough, um, and a few other, uh, locations in town. But in, in those areas, um, where we might have, um, a small strip of commercial like Downland County Road, but there are residences across the street. Currently, we don't have any of those types of signs over there, but, um, the Planning Board felt it would be more appropriate to restrict them there.
All right. Any questions? Those two seem very straightforward.
So Mr. Chairman, at this time, the Board would need to, um, vote on the warrants separately, Tracy, is that right?
Um.
Or together?
The articles themselves?
I didn't amend anything.
No.
I'm just, traditionally, the vo- the articles are voted separately, looking at past special town meeting. We can set a new trend and as presented, sure?
Yeah, is there a requirement for that?
The post, the packet was posted, right?
Yes.
Yep.
We're gonna have the final, we're in the final warrant coming up anyway, so.
Right. All right, does anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, um, that we approve the, uh, warrant articles as presented, uh, for the special town meeting for Monday, well, the articles one through ten, um, for the special town meeting scheduled for Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM at Aponequay Regional High School Auditorium.
Second.
Okay, first and a second. Any more discussion? If not, okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Mark, thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Sheriff, if I may, just at the end of this, um, because where we post this, um, I don't know how all these locations came to be. I'd like to understand what we would need to do if it's just a vote of the Select Board as to where these are posted. Um, hearing that, and maybe we can prepare for our annual Town Meeting and expand this list as there has been concern, you know, from residents that they didn't have access to. I know that there's a good list here, but didn't have access to the warrant articles and information. So maybe we can, um, you know, revisit this at some point and find out how, what the process is to maybe expand this.
Sure. And if any of those folks have recommendations on places they visit, that would be more helpful.
The library came up.
Yeah, that one's not on here.
And, um, because we have Assawamse and the, the high school, maybe, you know, it's the intermediate school and maybe the middle school. So I just, I know that we're, you know, this board has discussed many times, uh, resident service and availability and, you know, the outreach. So maybe there's just opportunity, you know, to get the word out.
I don't know if there's a statute here. If you want us to add the library, I think we can add the library.
Let's see, I don't know if it was this board, but it was amended not too long ago because Fat Cousins changed name. It was a previous, um, business, so we had updated the name. Yes?
Um, there are a certain number of places that need to be designated per precinct.
Right, okay.
That's where the number came from. Um, they.
The addition of a place like the library.
I'm not sure if you can just add one to a precinct. You may have to add one to each precinct. So that's definitely a town clerk, um, but I do know that it is a required amount per precinct.
We can dig into, we'll dig into that.
Okay.
Sounds good.
We'll have the issue before the town.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, um, Frank's still here. Um, do we want to skip to number nine?
Sure.
Discuss some possible votes to approve DPW heavy motor equipment operator hire at Level Two, Step Four. Thank you for your patience, sir.
Trouble filling those spots? Yeah. So we have two vacant. This is, um, a returning employee. So that's why I'm looking to put him at, um, the highest step. He knows the processes, um. He's a young man, but he has a lot to learn, but he, he's already familiar with our, he was here for all the seasons, so. Jumping right in, he'll, he's already familiar with all our equipment and processes as far as snow and ice goes. Um, same thing can be said about, you know, jumping into landscape and everything in spring. So that's, that's the basis of where I'm trying to get him at that step.
All right. Um, they would come on board effective relatively soon, or?
Um, a couple, probably by October, I would say, first.
And no, no problems all with you previously?
Um, no, nothing to be con- nothing I'm concerned with.
Good. All right. Uh, any questions for Director Moniz? Ari, any budget impact?
Um, no, sir, not, not, not.
I've had, I have two vacant positions for the last two months, so I'm.
Just filling in.
I'm in good, good shape as far as that goes, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the DPW heavy motor equipment operator hire at Level Two, Step Four.
Seth Ferrera, do we want to name his name, or?
You'll have to approve the hire.
Oh, okay. Uh, second.
Just go to higher step.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience tonight, sir.
Thank you.
All right, uh, back to seven. Discuss some possible votes to approve House of Representatives' proposed change to the five-member board petition. Very minor, minor change, correct?
Correct. The, um, there's a four amendment proposed, uh, in the House to change first ballot election to first annual election. Um, that provides more clarity when it comes to when the first election for the five-member board would be. And Town Council says, has signed off on that.
All right, um.
So I guess there could be a ballot election.
In theory, yeah, it could be.
Theory, right.
In theory, yeah.
Primary.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Um, I know it's not related to this evening really, but has Senate looked at this yet, or will this just go on to them next?
Oh, it's just going to them next.
Okay. All right. Uh, any questions with this minor amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, the House of, House of, or House of Representatives' proposed change to the five-member, um, board petition as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I'm going to number eight. I'm going to number eight. Discuss some possible votes to appoint Kevin Duquette as sealer of weights and measures.
I don't know, Mr. Chair, but um Nate Darling sent a text to you and I
Mm-hmm.
saying that he was stuck in traffic and wasn't able to make it tonight.
Okay.
Said that the individual proposed um is the only, was the only applicant and has an impeccable reference.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion um to appoint Kevin Duquette as our new sealer of weights and measures with an appointment term that would expire on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second, sorry.
It's all right. Um, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, thank you. Good to get that one filled. Glad we found somebody. Okay, uh under number ten, schedule meetings for November, December, and January. Um.
So I circulated the dates that we had discussed. Um, one of you indicated they have a conflict on the twentieth.
Yep.
November, so.
And I had indicated a while back whether or not we wanted to entertain moving away from Monday nights. I know Tracy had done a bunch of research on rooms.
Yes, um there really is no available time without disrupting another group and making them change to Mondays.
Is it something anybody wants to entertain at this point, or just stick with what we have for now?
I don't mind Mondays, honestly. I mean, I mean, we'll, let's see what happens with the five-member board.
Okay, I can do that.
I definitely can't make the twentieth, though. I won't be here.
Uh so we'll have the sixth, the thirteenth. We usually have a small meeting right before town meeting.
Right.
And then.
Twenty-seventh would be a challenge because right after Thanksgiving, we can really get a packet turned around very well for that.
Um.
And then we go right into December fourth.
Right.
So maybe, may.
The sixth and thirteenth, and if we need a special meeting, we can ask you for one.
We could do that. I mean, we could just have a slightly longer meeting before town meeting if we have to.
Yeah.
If there's business, right?
If there is business, because you'll just admit on the sixth.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we should, you know, do whatever we can on the thirteenth.
Normally do the budget outlook around that meeting around Thanksgiving, so that normally that would probably have been on the twentieth, so. You know, if we can do the budget outlook on the sixth, we'll try. It's very early. Maybe we'll do it the fourth. December, that might be more realistic.
Say the fourth.
Yeah, probably more realistic. Well, that shouldn't be a problem.
If there's any, I mean, we'll know as we're, you know, going through, you know, the days, what items have to be addressed.
Yep.
There could quite possibly be after town meeting. Nothing that, you know, business that has to be attended to that can't wait until December fourth.
Right, I mean, if we really had to, too, we could do a remote one.
Correct.
Between town meeting and December fourth.
So I say X and A on the November twentieth.
Okay. So.
So six and thirteen?
Six and thirteen. Does that work for you, Leah?
Yep.
I think that December was okay, and as far as I know, January is good, too.
All right, sounds good. Let's pencil those in. Okay, building committee updates, item eleven. A first senior center feasibility.
Yes, I don't know if you all received the stuff that um we sent, that we had gone over. Um, it was a good meeting. Um preliminary designs, um. I wish we had two million dollars. It would be so nice to be able to just build that out right now. Um, especially when Director Fahey gave us some idea of the numbers of folks hitting either fifty-five, sixty, or sixty-five in the next ten years. So right now, there is a waiting list, so folks show up to do the exercise, the exercise classes that are offered at the senior center in hopes someone else doesn't show. That's how backed up some of this stuff is, some of these programs are over there. So to say there isn't a need, just, you know, is 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 false. Um, and, you know, from a very um uh just personal view here, I'm thrilled to see people going to the senior center. That's what it's there for. It's there so no senior gets left behind, no senior. And and we're not even talking like, you know, I mean, if you're fifty-five or sixty, you can, that's not old, but it gives you a place to belong. It gives you something to do. So what they did was the project manager put together um one design. Um, that's a smaller build, and then a second one. So um the director had put together a team of, a group of, um they're all women, who are like an advisory board, who made some really great suggestions on what they would like to see, not just in an addition, but in the actual facility itself, including, you know, updating lighting with some of the, you know, automatic lighting that turns off, which is more energy, you know, um, energy conscious. So um they made some really great recommendations. They asked some really great questions. If anyone hasn't watched that meeting, I recommend that you do, but. Um, so we asked some questions and we asked the project manager to, you know, fine tune a few things and um. Yeah, so it was a great meeting, a lot of progress. Um, we're not prepared to share those preliminary, not that they're, I think Lake Cam recorded them anyways, but um. So one addition would be about eight hundred square feet, which would add, which would be added to the back. One would be a two thousand-plus-square-foot addition on um the right side of the building facing it. But there's a lot of concerns with everything, roof lines and, you know, so it's it's kind of good, going in a good direction here, so. Um, if you have any questions, you can let me and Ari know, but our next meeting is, um, I forget, Ari.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, was it November?
In the future.
October, okay.
Yeah, hold on.
Yep.
Eighteenth, I believe. Yeah, the eighteenth.
Yeah, yep. So it was good, good meeting that night.
Nice. Yeah, thank you for sending over the materials. It would have been nice to see kind of the concept, at least, to visualize it. All right, um, anything else? Or on to fire station?
On to fire station.
All right, fire station.
Okay, um, not much to uh update since our last meeting, as our fire station building committee meeting is this Wednesday. And again, we had four submittals for the architectural uh design. And we'll discuss our next steps on Wednesday evening to bring us closer to identifying who will be our architectural designer for the project.
All right, sounds good.
Stay stay tuned, and I'm sure I'll have a better or more in-depth update at the next meeting.
After they've been cut down. Um, okay, so uh anything else? We're going to Oncology next. All right, um Oncology, no real updates at this point, so uh as we had learned last meeting, they just formally got introduced uh invited into the MBSA program. Um, I have one short call with Director Polanski over the last week and a half or so. Um, the next steps really are just, they're starting to discuss putting together like an OPM selection committee, and that's about it right now. Um, otherwise, it's just getting into the weeds of what programs they want to consider adding or what number of students they want to have in the the um the school. Um, that's that's all for now.
So might I ask?
Yes.
I don't know if you know the answer, but is that the stage where they would say, gee, we don't offer this, so maybe we would like to?
Yeah, they have to, I think you call it right-size the school, and right-size kind of turns into, well, what can the, what are the towns willing to support um within, you know, their fiscal boundaries? Um, they've got a certain number of students now. They turn around, they turn away more kids per every every great incoming class. They turn away more than they actually accept. It's under fifty percent acceptance. And that's without um calling an HPAC right now. So they'll have to look at, do they want to add one program, two programs, three programs? Um, do they want to keep the programs they have, but increase the number of slots that they have? Um, and then that will, that will start to weigh into the design of, you know, what are we actually looking for here? And in the feasibility study, you know, is it remodel, addition, full rebuild? Many different options could come out of it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? We're moving on. Does anybody need a break? It's been two hours. All right.
I would like a.
Take a five-minute recess, come back at five past?
Yes, please.
All right. Wake time, if you can just mute us for now, keep the video on, please? Okay. 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 We back on, sir?
We are.
All right, uh coming off recess, so um coming up was item number. Going up now, twelve, town administrators annual review. We've got some technical difficulties with one of the reviews, so. Question before the board is, do we want to do as best we can with one of the copies missing, or do we want to defer to another evening? The next meeting is October tenth after Labor Day, not that we got Columbus Day. Not that we couldn't schedule another one in between now and then if we needed to. So if there's a preference, one or the other?
I mean, I don't, we could do it by Zoom.
Could do that.
Easy.
I mean, that works for me, and then that gives us more scheduling options.
I can let you know as soon as I work with Bob and get it all.
So I guess I'm trying to understand what the what the issue is here. Um. Do.
We're missed.
I don't understand.
Leah does not have
I don't have my.
printed out version of it.
Hobby.
And her machine is stuck in update mode, so it won't let her in to get it, to go through it.
So I could do the narrative part because I know what I wrote. So, I could do the narrative part, because I know what I wrote, but I don't have my values, the number values.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the...
I think it's important. I mean, we've waited a long time to do Ari's review, and, I mean, if that's... If you're comfortable, I mean, the tallies, you know, I mean, they can certainly be reviewed, and this will become a public document once we, you know, accept it and discuss it. But I think the narrative, I think, is really, you know, important.
Oh, I agree, narrative is good.
Yep. So, I have my blank document, I think, so I can...
Well, I've got copies of mine.
And I have my copies of the...
Oh, okay.
You only know the format.
Yep. And I can submit mine to the clerk's office tomorrow and get it stamped. So, thank you.
Welcome. Actually, I've got one for Ari, too.
And I have one for the record if you need it.
I know this is always awkward, and I really am going to press this board when we have a five-member board, to really come up with a really good flow for an evaluation with, you know, set dates. Because when you get to the meeting and you hand it out for the first time, I would like the town administrator to be able to take a few minutes to review what we wrote, because I think that's important. And then, obviously, our discussion. So, I'm not quite sure how that works, but I'm sure that there are other municipalities that have, you know, a system in place that's, you know, that works.
Right. I totally agree with you. This process needs a complete revamp. Even the forms that we use, it's kind of like filling out the same four form twice, one with letter ratings and one with number ratings, assuming I have the correct forms. So, I totally agree, we should, you know, maybe that's another five-member board thing, go through and really put a timeline on this.
So, I can't help but say this, but I did say when we had started this process back in May or June, that I was willing, because I had been the one that chaired it last... Well, chaired it for whatever, for the lack of a better term, that I had said that this process was exactly what you both just said.
You did.
And I said that I would take the time to come up with a better, you know, plan, but, you know, we went ahead, so I...
It's all good, and I'm just trying to buy Ari some time right now through discussion.
I just think it's something that can't wait until the spring. So, some... We should probably appoint someone at this point to start working on it, at least coming up with ideas or something, so...
Back in May, we thought we'd be done in July, so I think we didn't think we had time to revamp it at that point, but totally agree with you.
Sometimes you gotta listen to the old people that have been around for a while, but whatever.
No one disagrees.
Okay.
So, let's see. The two of you were here for the review process last year, correct?
Yep.
I was not. I've not personally sat through one of these processes yet. For everybody out there, there essentially is an annual review process for the town administrator that I believe was set in the Town Administrator Act of 98, where it says that every year there'll be a review. We have a force, essentially, the forms that we used that have a combination of, and, you know, like any review, a lot of this is subjective to the person filling it out. There's a bunch that have areas related to communication skills, interpersonal skills, leadership, planning, management staff, general comments, and then, like, narrative sections that ask questions like, what do you think is going well? What do you think of improvements? Things along those, that nature. So, as you hear us go through these, those are the kinds of things that we were asked to fill out. Oh, we don't... Did you guys go through scores last time, or did you go right to narratives?
I can't even remember.
Um, I think we just briefly each looked at them.
Okay.
But I don't think we spent a whole lot of time on the actual scores.
All right. Does anybody want to do... Do you want to go right to a narrative, then? Or Ari, do you have any questions before we go further?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Let's see. All right, well, if you'd like, did you go through your whole narratives? Would you like to go through your whole narratives?
I don't think it's necessary to go through the whole narratives, but...
Okay. Then I will apply my bullet points. I think I have a piece of paper here. Okay, I'll go through mine first, I guess. So, again, we have two forms. One of them starts off with ratings of E, excels, M meets, or N I needs improvement, which goes through a number of different categories. I'll go through my numbers, just I feel better that way. So, as I gone through, I had excels under 22 different categories, I believe those 30 questions. Excels on 22, meets on eight, and zero on needs improvement. Doesn't mean that there aren't areas that could have some improvement, but I felt needs improvement really was like you're scraping the bottom of the barrel when you get into that score. So, I know there's things I've talked to Ari about where we could work on things in the future. The second form was numerical scores, five being the highest, one being the lowest, through another series of questions. Five questions plus there's another five points in each category, so total 30 is the best you could have. Ten categories out of 300 points, I had 284 points throughout all the different ones. Ari, for kind of the bullet points, my narrative, which you'll have in front of you, I tried to pull out. I think a strong point of yours is absolutely, you know, fiscal detail. You are on top of the numbers all the time. From what I've seen, it's been a great working relationship with Todd. My time on FinCom, you always took time to answer and explain why numbers were working certain ways, and seemed like you were getting out ahead of numbers, things that we might see coming in the next fiscal years. Last town meeting, one of our residents actually came to the mic and said that it was the most detailed budget he'd ever seen for FY '24, and this was a person that, when he gives you a compliment, you know it's good, so I just wanted to call that out. We've got a number of various opera projects that are in play, including the giant check that we see this evening, which I think is great. I know that's a huge team effort, but a lot of that runs through your office, so I'm glad to see those progressing. The class and comp underway, I know it's... It's something everybody's kind of wondering, like, what are we gonna learn from it? But I think the fact that we're willing to push forward and kind of look at the mirror is good. We might see, we've got corrections to make or things that we didn't do right, but you gotta look at yourself every now and then. As far as I'm concerned, every time I ask if you can follow up on something, you get back with a reasonable amount of time. That might be a day, could be a week, depending on what the ask is. You tend to always come back with the details that I've asked for. When we do disagree, we do it in a respectful manner. I have learned things from you. I hope I've shared the same. I think we always come away, at least, with an understanding of why we have each other's viewpoint. Go down the list. Public outreach, the video series have been great. I think those have been really good at describing how things work. I think, as we, the board here, went through the TA goals for the next year, I think we identified a few other areas to improve on, which you've not moved back on, and you've said you're willing to go down, and so I welcome the fact that you're open on that. We have had a few comments from residents. I don't know how to fix this one. They're just saying communications could just be a little clearer, speak up a little more. I know we've talked about, even happened this evening, it wasn't even yourself, how can we improve the facilities we have in town so that we can all be heard a little better? Especially if somebody's sitting in that corner, they're behind you, so that can be probably tough. Couple of department heads have mentioned at times, and this just might be, you know, getting through the first contract period, that they feel like maybe a little bit micromanaged more than they were used to, and that might just be part of learning what a department does and trying to inject a little bit. So, maybe, maybe a good thing would just be to sit down and just have an open conversation with all of them, say what's been working well, what's not been working well. We had asked for department head feedback and got none, so I don't know if that's just they didn't feel comfortable or what it was, but I was a little disappointed to see that where department heads didn't come out and talk about things. So, generally speaking, I mean, I think there's a lot of things that are going well. We certainly have heard a few resident suggestions for improvements, and you and I have talked about some of those over the past few months. Again, I only came on the board in April, so it's been about five months now. But overall, please, we've got a few things, minor things I think we'll work on, and we'll go from there. Any comments or questions, or just wanna...
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
For mine, I didn't go into, you know, calculating my numbers, but for the most part, I think, you know, for the last year, Ari has certainly met all the expectations that were identified here under this rating criteria. The only ones that I really felt that would need improvement is something that, you know, we've discussed here. And, you know, when you say bottom of the barrel, I... It makes me crazy, because there's only three, you know, opportunities here, and then just... It has nothing, you know, other than I would like to see the communication skills and the, you know, more of a community and resident, you know, kind of building of relationships a little bit more. And I know sometimes it's a little difficult, you know, in the office, and, you know, if you try to reach out to people, you know, they might not get back to you, but I know that that is, you know, something that I think is, would strengthen our mission and the messages that we're trying to come across and, you know, as we develop our other initiatives throughout the town, is just to really build that, you know, that communication and relationships with the residents. I think as far as the information that's provided to our board, I will never say it's overkill, ever, because I think more information is good, and you do share it with us, and I know that there are concerns, you know, going into the five-member board, that it's just gonna be more taxing on you. So, I'm hoping that, you know, you'll be able to find another vehicle in which to communicate with, you know, with five members versus the three, to not, you know, heavy your plate, you know, with that piece of communication. But I have to say that that communication has been, through us, has been wonderful, and I appreciate that. Your financial and, you know, budgetary and policy development, exceptional. I can't, I can't stress that enough. I think it's just, you know, I know going into the numbers, that if you say, you know, that it's balanced, and, you know, I've, I have no questions on that, because really, you've developed a budget cycle, you've made some recommendations to align the process, you've made it clear, residents have really appreciated that, because that is one of our biggest responsibilities, is to put forth a, you know, a responsible budget, and you've done that with this last year. I just, I just really would like to just, just say that, you know, the communication and, you know, because Ari has, you have a lot to say, and you have a lot of knowledge and information. You've expanded your professional development through the ICMA, and they have given you some, you know, great ideas of things that you can implement here, and I think that you've started to do that. And I just think that, you know, to be able to communicate that message out would just, you know, betterment, you know, better this group here. Your goals that you put forth in 2022 to 2023, we've met those. There were just a few that kind of came over on '24. I thought you did a great job identifying the goals for 2024. So, I'm hoping that, you know, we can really get those, you know, accomplished and giving you the support that you need for that. Anyways, that's pretty much just mine in a nutshell.
Hey, one thing, if I may, if you're done, if I put in narrative I meant to put on here, I forgot, was I also appreciate the... You bring the, you bring things to us that are a little further looking out. We don't always bite on the line the first time, for sure, but I hope they keep coming so that, you know, we understand that we need to get more proactive on things, and there's been a lot of things that we remain reactive on. And even if they haven't all been accepted yet, I'd say, keep coming. It gets us thinking, or at least it gets me thinking, and, you know, maybe it takes a few revisions on the drafts, but we'll get there on some of those things. That's all, sorry.
Okay, so, I am going off of memory here. I want to say that same similar thing with the valuations. It's really hard to evaluate someone with just, you know, three options. I think the number one was a little bit different. I will say that compared to last year, some of my number, numbers went down a little bit, and I do mention in my comments that, and after looking at yours, Brian, I'm gonna make this, this hypothesis here, that when you're the chair, it's far more different because you do interact more. So, you know, my ratings sort of went down a little bit. Now, perhaps it was because I was used to getting information firsthand and talking to Ari on a daily basis, sometimes two and three and four times a day, and, you know, I just, I just feel like there's been a little less, honestly, communication. I feel like I'm not knowing everything that I should be, and I'm often having to work harder on myself to, to get information. And I know we're all trying to stay in our own lanes, but, you know, that hasn't been the case for me. Not the beginning half when Mr. LaCamera was the chair of, from April through November, and again from May, well, April, when you became the chair. So, I feel like I'm looking and I'm having to work harder for information. I also know that in the sections on the, the strengths, I identify the same thing. I identified budgets, I identified financial planning. All that is definitely a strength that Ari, you know, has, has possessed. I noted the same similar things as you all did about communication, but I did also put notes in there, and it was pretty obvious at that special meeting that we had, that I was a bit disappointed that it's just assumed that it's okay not to consult the select board. And again, this, this is just me. The other select board members have their own opinion, but I still feel as though, and I had said this that day, and this is reflected in my, in my review, that when policies are being created, that select board members are going to be responsible for using in their day-to-day life. I think the select board should have an option to participate in the creation, not just in amending a document, let's say. And for anyone who says there isn't a difference, there is a difference, and it's already obvious with this board that several things that have come to our attention, including the old Bridge Street project and the abutters bylaw, that all three of us, even though we're three very different people, we all had very similar concerns. So, I feel like one of us could represent, I mean, we know because of the open meeting law, and there's only three of us, that we can't. So, that information is also in my review. And then, the one other area that I did put in my review is that this town is not prepared to go in a direction of a town manager. The town has voted for more representation for a five-person board, not less. The town has voted in a recall, and the town has also voted down changing the elected position of the clerk to appointed. So, I think sometimes Ari has a tendency of trying to stay very narrow focus without sort of actually paying attention to some of those Facebook comments, and sometimes it's the same people over and over again, but those are the folks who aren't necessarily afraid to speak out when other people may be. So, and I've been, you know, negatively impacted by some of the comments and everything else, but we still have to pay attention to how some of the folks feel. Lakeville is a very conservative town, and it's clear to me that they want more representation. So, for us to be trying to, I almost feel like sometimes we're trying to be pushed to go towards like a town manager role. to go towards like a town manager role. We're so, we are going in the other direction where the residents want more say, not less. So I just caution, you know, the town administrator on, on that. That's it.
Make a comment, it sounds like there's a theme where maybe all of us together need to find a way to communicate a little better. And that might be different methods. Maybe just the methods we're using aren't as great. But we have put that in the goals for the year as well. To increase that and community engagement as well.
Right, but I, like I said, I, I feel like, and again, this has nothing to do with the review for the town administrator. It has to do with, you know, something that, you know, I'd like the other two select board members to consider. I, you know, Facebook is a crazy place, social media, but, you know, these are the same types of things that people tell me when they see me in the supermarket or they send me messages or, and they want to be in control of their town government. And we have to acknowledge that as select board members. And if it takes more time to get two more select board members on board, then we have to do that. It doesn't matter how much time it takes because that's what the residents want. And I am the first one to admit, I haven't always done what the residents want, but, you know, I still can't deny that, you know, that, 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 that that's a theme. And I think the residents expect us to be involved way more than maybe in other towns. And maybe that's what happens in conservative towns like ours, but I think we owe it to the residents to, um, to make phone calls all the time and try to get the information, whether, wherever we're getting it from, so. And we're all good. We know, we know what's going on. We know when to question. We know, you know, but I think it's been eye-opening in the last year to see those three things have taken place and how much folks are paying attention. And I actually, it's not always easy, but I welcome it, so.
Go ahead. I was hoping that, you know, Ari would be able to speak a little bit, maybe outside, you know, this actual document, but kind of give his perspective, you know, from his second, second year, right? Going, we're going into the third year.
Well, the first I've seen the documents, I'm not gonna comment on the documents.
No, no. Not, right, I'm not saying it about the documents, but I'm just saying about, you know, your year in review.
I, um, I'm gonna withhold comment.
I can respect that.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that. You know, I think to, you know, not an opposing viewpoint, but I think too, some of the things Leah just brought up, they weren't all unanimous votes at town meetings to change some of these things. So while yes, the votes did sway for some of those things, for sure. Sometimes that's also the, the temperature of the room that evening as well. So I think I respect the fact that there are still those that didn't vote for those things, wherever they might be. And, you know, their voice is to be heard as much as the others. And that's a, that's a tough balance.
I think I will say something. So the, if it's okay. So I completely agree with Leah's point that, that a town deserves the former government that it wants, the structure that it wants and the roles that it wants. The question is whether, whether the former government that you have in place is the former government that you want and whether this town wants. You know, right now we have a fairly strong Town Administrator Act in place because the town administrator has certain authorities, certain responsibilities. And if I didn't assume those responsibilities, then I wouldn't be doing my job. Unfortunately, some of that sometimes seems to cause a pushback. So perhaps the town, you know, and this is not my decision to make. I'm not, I'm a employee of the town. Perhaps the town needs to decide, you know, what form of government it really wants to have. And I'm not talking about a town, town manager. I'm talking about an executive secretary or something like that. Maybe that's, maybe that's more amenable to, to the form of government you wanna have. If you're gonna have a go for three members to five members, you know, then frankly, the need for, and experience shows elsewhere in, elsewhere in towns, with five members, the need for executive authority is greater, not less. The need for, the need to have a town administrator who has the ability to, to assume some control for things is greater, not less. And when you have five members. But if that, but if that's not what this board wants, then the board must try another direction. That's absolutely the board's decision to do so. You know, I, I was, when I was hired here in 2021, I was told that, you know, this is, that I was being, given this organization with the reins to run, do what I gotta do to get, to make it work. And, um, and I did what I felt I needed, what I needed to do. If that's not an approach that the board's comfortable with, then the board has every, every ability and right and, and responsibility, frankly, to, to, to make a decision to go another direction. That's really the board's call and I'll accept whatever the board decides to do.
Individually at least, I think I, I fall towards, you know, what you just represented. You were hired to do. You know, if you look at the Town Administrator Act itself, it, for better or worse, it does really outline our role versus the town administrator's role. And whether that is what the town itself wants, certainly is something that's always up for question in review. But within the guidelines provided by that act, I do look to you to run the things day-to-day, make the call when it's necessary, engage with us to develop policy and procedure, which we've tried to do a little bit of and have started to do, and, and execute on what those policies are. So I, I think I probably am a little more hands-off, at least try to be, and, and watch, observe and see that the things that are being asked for are being done. If they're not, then you certainly have a conversation. But I, I think you are, you know, you are the one with the reins personally.
I mean, I will say it's disruptive to my ability to do this job. And I, I have no problem with, with board members having conversations with, with staff members. I encourage it. I think it's useful. I think it's helpful for information and everything else. But it, but it is disruptive to me, in terms of, to, to ability to do this job fairly for the board, if there's conversations going on that I don't know about and they get dropped in a meeting, in a meeting and, you know, without warning. It has happened.
That's fair.
And, and that, that's, that's, that's a challenge. It makes it difficult to, to do this job and fairly meeting less effective with the board. And less, less effective for staff and for the town. But that's, that's.
You know, there was a, a rule that I remember when I first started on the school committee back in 2000 that I was shared when I was going through my training. And I try to make sure that I exercise that. And it's no surprises. So I wouldn't want to surprise the town administrator or the staff. Let them know if there's information or discussion on, in a meeting, which I try to, I try to uphold. And, and that's reciprocated where there'd be no surprises. And I think that at this point, you know, Ari has been able to, you know, protect this board in that respect that, you know, try to get ahead of anything that would be considered a surprise. So, um, but that's just something to keep in mind that, you know, when we're, when we're doing things, that we want to make sure that there's no surprise.
Yep, yep, absolutely. All right. Again, these are all subjective. Different people could be entirely different answers. So it's always tough to, to go do subjective reviews. It's why objective is nice and we have goals set to help, you know, do some of that. If there's no other comments, we can move on. I'd just like to say thank you. So far it's been a pleasure. And we'll see what '24 brings. FY '24.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, um, so then we'll move on to item 13. Do we have any new business to come before the board? If not, 14, old business. Tracy, I might, look, you alluded to this, but we had a liquor license transfer at our last meeting. And is it correct to say that there's been some discovery in the documentation where that is being withdrawn or?
Yes. In conversation with the ABCC, I went up to them and the investigator found a lot of things that needed to be revised in the application, information that they had found was missing or didn't correspond. And so I had a conversation with the executive director and the applicant and it was agreed that he's going to withdraw his application and start over. He's gonna hire an attorney to fill out the application and, you know, correct the issues that are ongoing. He has purchased the property and is running the property. However, he is not allowed to sell alcohol. So that's the status on that. He will be submitting a new application.
Do you think it's necessary for us to send a letter to that gentleman at this point?
Yes, the ABCC recommended that we send a letter to him, asking him to formally withdraw. During the conversation, the applicant did say he would send a letter. However, we haven't received it yet. So I'm gonna send him an email and ask him to send a letter. And they also recommended that we do a follow-up with a letter informing the applicant that, you know, he needs to remove the stock from the shelves and coolers and cannot sell alcohol until the transfer is approved.
Okay, all right. Do you need anything from us on that or is that something you know how to work out?
Yeah, we'll just prepare the letter and get it out. And, and I, I do have to say, the applicant was extremely cooperative and willing to, to do whatever we asked. So he will hire legal counsel to prepare the application this time.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, anything else? Old business? No? Okay. Anything else? All right, um, if there's nothing further than, I'd create a motion to adjourn at 8:41 PM.
I'm moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you everybody, have a good night.